Brian, are you ready?
Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It is January 3rd, and I'd like to welcome to the regular session of the Rochester Planning Commission, and I would ask that the clerk call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman McGee?
Here.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Here.
Secretary/Counselman Sage?
He is not a vote.
He is here.
Here, but non-voting, right?
Correct.
Hope you're feeling better.
Exactly.
I know, I know, I know.
Mayor Bixson?
Here.
Commissioner Gasson?
Here.
Commissioner Lord?
Here.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Here.
Commissioner Stone? And Commissioner King?
Those are excused. Okay, we have a quorum. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is public comment number three. This is for anyone who's with us either in person or electronically, who wants to speak on any issue, preferably items not on the agenda. We'll get to those items later. Is there anyone that needs, wants to speak? Yeah, thank you. Approval of the minutes of December the 5th. Commissioners, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes?
So moved.
The mayor moves approval. Is there support?
Support.
Reported by Mr. Hauser. Any discussion on the minutes? The roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chairman Hauser? Or, I'm sorry, Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Gasson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
That covers us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, number five, is public hearings, and we do not have any public hearings this evening. Number six, considerations. The first item on that list is A, Crook Cards, 210 Campbell Street. Vidia, will you be handling this? Can't hear you. Still on mute. Mute. Can't hear you.
Vidia, it doesn't show you're on mute, but... Oh, boy. Let's see if he knows.
Vidia, it appears to be at your end.
No sign language, Vidia.
Just made a log out, logged back in.
Counselman Sage, could you talk again? Let's see if we can still hear you.
I'm here.
Okay, all right. Come on, Vidia. Oh, okay. You want to call in?
Call in, yeah.
If we, while Vidia's figuring that out, Mayor, if you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to go down to D, because I have to do, we're going to do that one about the amendment, the Central Business District, West East.
Well, go ahead. Go ahead with D.
Okay. So D is on our agenda. It's Discussion Amendment, Article 11 CBD, Central Business District. Vidia, on your, yep?
I have her here.
Okay, go ahead. Let's go back to Vidia. If you put her on speaker and then put that by the mic, I think it should work.
Hey, Vidia, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Just speak up. We're on my, on my phone.
Okay, I have muted my microphone on the computer. I'm on the speakerphone on my phone.
Okay, go ahead with Crook Cards.
Thank you. So, the request we're going to use tonight is for warehouse use within an existing industrial building. The site is 2.41 acres located at the end of Campbell and Fraser Streets.
I don't know.
It's not going to work. It's rough.
You know what it is? It's picking up the microphones here, too.
Yeah, if I turn the mic.
Okay, I turned off my speakerphone. Can you hear me now?
That's better. That's better. Yes, can you put that by your microphone?
Okay, apologies. I was trying to use my speakerphone, thinking it would beat you better.
Okay, go ahead.
The proposed use is a warehouse.
No. Two mic jack calls.
Let me, let me call back in on the phone for Zoom rather than do this, please.
Okay. Stephen, how are you feeling?
Uh, a little better. I guess you could feel, it's just annoying. The symptoms are just annoying.
Yeah. How long have you had it?
Uh, tested positive for three days so far.
Okay. Well, good luck. It'll, it'll go away.
I know, I know.
How long do the lights on Main Street stay on?
Yeah, so they'll be on, um, so every weekend through Friday night, so three more weekends. So just Friday, Saturday, Sunday, after in the week, and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then Friday night is Friday, Saturday, and then they'll take them down. We did good.
January 21st-ish or so?
Yeah. She's very, Christie was very happy with, we barely had any outages compared to the past. There's one on the Crispin Building this morning. That was it, literally. Amazingly did well with that wind and the rain. They should not be on tonight, yeah.
I was downtown many times. I have to say, it seemed busier this year than any other year.
I agree.
You think so?
I would agree with that also.
It was just amazing.
I, I, I told staff to hear so many people say, I heard them over, heard them say, this was on my bucket list, to hear those words like 10 times probably while we're done. That's pretty cool. Just lots of smiles and pictures and stuff.
Oh, yeah. This is the place to be.
All right, Vidia, are you there anywhere yet? Oh, she just came in. Vidia, try to unmute one more time.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Very good. She needs to turn, what her, something is on a loop on her thing. Yeah, turns her microphone off, I think, on her phone, on the computer.
And her speaker.
Yeah, and her speaker, exactly. Try it now, Vidia.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's very good.
There you go.
Hello?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. I turned off the speaker on my computer, too, and I apologize. I am sick, too. That's why I didn't want to come in. Not COVID, but cough, cold, fever, the whole nine yards. So apologies for not being there in person.
No problem.
So, the proposed use by Crook Cards is a warehouse use. The building is also occupied by a kennel and a dog daycare operation that occupies a total of 3,200 square feet. Now, the warehouse and storage use is a principal permitted use in the I-2 district as written by an ordinance at this time. The applicant appeared before you for preliminary plan consideration and also for a public hearing on November 7th of 2022 and the schedules for consideration at this meeting. The existing building on the site, I will share my screen at this time, if you'll give me just a second, and I will find the plan to share on my screen. Can you all see the plan on the screen, please?
Yes.
So the existing building is non-conforming with respect to the site and rear yard setbacks. This building was originally constructed in 1950s in order to make use of the rail lines that goes along the trail, but the rail line has long since been abandoned in a few, but the building's existing non-conformity remains. The building footprint is not being altered, so the existing non-conformity can remain hazardous at this time. With regard to access and regular circulation, the subject site is located at the dead end of both Campbell Streets and Fraser Streets, which Fraser Street is on the west end of the site. So it is at the dead end of two streets. Last time, we had asked the applicant to identify the width of both access drives, and the access drives have a width of 25 feet and 31 feet, both of which are intended for two-way movement of vehicles and meets the ordinance's minimum width requirement of 24 feet. The storage trailers that are previously shown along the north property line that you see over here have all been removed, and they have been shown in designated parking spaces that you see up on the site plan labeled over here. The applicant had mentioned these as trailers that are just like the extended trailers taken on vehicles that are parked over here. So these are at this time considered as parked vehicles, and the applicant has submitted a circulation diagram showing maneuvering in and out of the spaces for each of the trailers. No vehicles will be parked along the north property line as was being previously done. With regard to pedestrian circulation, the site does not have any actual frontage onto Campbell Street or Fraser Street since it's at the dead end, so no public street side sidewalk is required. The plan does show a barrier-free accessible route with an entry into the building on the northeast side, which would provide for handicap access to the building. With regard to parking, based on the ordinance standards, the site requires a total of 26 parking spaces. The plan includes a total of 27 parking spaces, two of which are handicap accessible, and both of them are right next to the barrier-free accessible route into the warehouse portion of the building. The plan at this time includes, previously there was a dumpster unit just placed in the middle of this paint area. That is no longer the case. The applicant is going to be building a new dumpster enclosure on the southwest corner of the site. The plan shows the dumpster enclosure and the gate, both to be constructed of chain link with vinyl slats.
Vidia, can you move your, uh...
Now, the zoning ordinance requires that the enclosure be constructed of a same material as the building, which is masonry.
Vidia, can you move that up a little bit?
So our recommendation is that the enclosure be masonry, but the gates can be chain linked with slats.
Could you move the, move your screen up?
Sure, I can, um...
Now we can see.
Would you like me to show a close-up?
No, that's fine. We couldn't see the dumpster enclosure.
Okay, the dumpster enclosure is placed in this area. The enclosure is shown at this time as being chain-linked, which we do not permit. The enclosure needs to be constructed of masonry, just like the principal building. With regard to screening, there is a specific section in the ordinance, 284, that requires a screening between a non-residential use that abuts a residential district or a use. Now, all of the properties to the north of the subject site are zones RT, which is two-family dwelling, and screening is required. The ordinance requires a masonry wall that is 4.5 feet in height from grade along the north property wall. Now, last time the applicant was before you, they presented that the steep grade change on the property line from the north property line down into the site makes a 4.5-foot-tall wall essentially non-functional. That is, it's not going to serve the purpose of screening. In view of it, the applicant has proposed to plant several evergreen trees, which include white spruce, mixed along with some deciduous trees, which are red cedar trees. If you see the site plan, all of these are new planting trees interspersed between a few. Few of the big, large white circles that you see are existing trees. All of the smaller ones that you see over here are new trees that are going to be planted to extend and increase the screening along the north property line. The Planning Commission under the ordinance standards has the discretion to allow for landscaping in view of a masonry screen wall. We believe the landscaping will be more effective in providing protection to the dwellings located to the north than a 4.5-foot-tall wall based upon the grade of the site. No changes to architecture or facade are proposed at this time. It appears sometime in the recent past, the building was painted entirely in a forest green color, and it appears to be in good condition. With regard to landscaping, as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing to install significant number of trees along the north property line. The vegetative buffer that is located along the Paint Creek Trail will remain undisturbed and as is at this time. The one requirement that we would like to add as a condition to site plan approval is that the trees along the north property line, the plan notes that the trees along the north property line will be watered until they get established. We want the condition to be placed that these trees will be maintained permanently. So if there is, say, the trees actually at this time get established, but in a couple of years, a dry year, and any of the trees die out, the applicant will have to immediately replace it in order to make sure that the green belt or the evergreen screening that is shown over there remains viable and in the condition that is presented to the PC at this time. Any future signage needs to be submitted for administrative approval. And the final requirement is with regards to open storage. The ordinance has specific requirements that open storage on the site or anything that is parked with storage needs to be screened from the abutting properties. As I previously mentioned, the storage trailers have all been moved with this portion of the site, and the plan at this time also proposes an eight-foot-tall chain-link fence with opaque fiberglass inserts which match the building color along this whole property line in order to screen the view of the site from the RM2 zone parcel to the east where the Riverfront Place Apartments project was recently approved. The applicant has been working with the city for a long time in order to get the code violations on the site corrected and to get proper site plan approval based on the ordinance standards. Based upon the proposal that is submitted at this time, it is our recommendation that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval for Crook Cards to be located at 210 Campbell Street, subject to three conditions. The first is installation of a masonry enclosure for the dumpster per the ordinance requirement. The second would be Planning Commission approval of the modified vegetative screen along the north property line. And the third condition would be maintenance of the proposed tree cover along the north property line permanently and replacement of any dead trees in a timely fashion. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Commissioners? Could you show us again where the eight-foot chain-link fence will be constructed?
The, if you could see my cursor, it is along the east property line over here.
Right on the property line.
This is an AutoCAD file, that's why those yellow boxes. This is the eight-foot screen fence. It's a chain-link fence with opaque fiberglass inserts. This, recently I have seen this used in many communities to screen. It appears to be an acceptable form of fencing in industrial areas and appears to be durable, too. In this case, since the vegetative screen in all this area is going to be maintained as is, the chain link with the fiberglass inserts will probably less obtrusive than trying to put any other type of fence down that property line.
Nick, do we know who owns the property south and east?
The Trail Commission, actually.
Both, both sides?
Uh, east would be Randazzo. I think he butts up to that.
Okay.
That's what, yeah, that's where the hill comes back up.
Okay. Eric?
Quick, quick questions for Vidia. Regarding lighting, I see that there's a note regarding wall-mounted fixtures are going to be replaced. What about the, I think there's a couple parallels on site, too. Do the poles comply? Do those need to be shielded?
Yes, but the applicant has submitted a lighting plan that shows the location of the existing poles. The existing wall-mounted fixtures on the building are not screened, and they will be replaced. The new light fixtures are all downward directed and shielded. There's a new shoebox-style fixture that has a cone of light illuminating just the building itself, and there will be zero light spillage to the property lines. The trees along the north property line should also be effective in cutting off any light from this site to the north and should keep the site safe while not creating any light pollution for the homeowners to the north.
Anyone else? Vidia, we have a, a letter we were given tonight from Stephanie Drozdowski. Do you have this letter?
Uh-huh.
Are...
No, I do not.
Okay. David?
I just have a couple comments, if I may.
I want to cover this letter first. This probably needs to be read into the record so that Vidia hears it.
Okay, so Patrick, you talked to her, I think, right?
Yeah, I can certainly read it.
What was your discussion with her?
She had some general concerns with regard to how the screening would take place on that north property line, and because there's a, a steep slope that exists, a big concern about the erosion that might take place as the planting and so forth happens. Stephanie might be here tonight, I...
Are you here, Stephanie? Would you mind coming up and just give us a summary of your letter? I'd like it to get in the record, and the planner has not, has not heard your concerns. You want a copy of it?
Here.
There you go.
I'm old, I don't remember. I have a pretty big voice. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, just state your name real quick, if you would, and speak into the, tip the microphone down there. There you go.
My name is Stephanie Drozdowski. I am the northern neighbor to Crook Property. My letter basically states that due to the incline, and I appreciate that great effort is being made to block the view. Up until a few years ago, the natural barrier was fine. It hid a lot. These trees, that incline is at least a good steep six feet up, so planting six-foot trees is not going to be above the residential line, the Heil Street line, the First Street line. I guess as a preference, without getting a geotechnical engineer or a civil engineer involved to ensure that our yards and our home foundations are not going to be compromised by damage to existing very large root systems that are holding that tree up. I'm very apprehensive about digging into that hill. There's already very large exposed root systems on several trees. I have a walnut tree sitting very close to the corner of my yard. Anything happens to that, my house will probably go down the hill. So, while I appreciate wanting to conceal on my side, I think if the trailers are allowed to be moved, and there's an effort by Crook to encourage the natural growth, try to put back what has been trimmed back by landscapers to protect his containers, I think more rapidly there will be a better umbrella blocking that property off.
So the original trees are still there? They were just trimmed?
Correct.
Nothing was removed?
Nothing has been removed. And like I said, it, it is very steep. I've probably lost several inches off the northeast corner of my yard over the years. So, I lose that walnut tree, my, I'm done.
So that, that's your biggest concern?
My, my biggest concern is the erosion. Something, if we can do more to embrace the native growth without it looking like it's weeds, trim back the ivy, the vines that strangle things down, I, I think we would see things flourish and fill in much more rapidly.
Vidia, what do you think?
That's all I've got.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
I think Stephanie's concern is very well-placed because the root systems of trees that have long been there are very well-established. That said, the, I would recommend that some trees still be put in, but the root system, I think this is something that Nick can speak better to, that when new trees are planted, that the existing root systems, there is a drip line for these trees that are long established, and there is a root system barrier. Maybe the root system's extent can be mapped, and nothing is dug or placed that close to the root system. For instance, if we have this elm tree, even though elm is not a desirable tree, it is still a longstanding tree, maybe some of the trees that might disturb the existing root system not be planted, and the vegetation just be put in wherever there are very obvious gaps in the tree line and leave the rest of the natural vegetation intact as it is.
Mr. Forester?
That is something that might work.
Yeah, I would agree. If Stephanie, I'll be glad to meet with Stephanie out there, and George, I'm sure, and, and Peter, and we can, I agree, we could infill without affecting anything. You don't want to plant them under the giant drip line anyway. You're going to, they're not going to get the shade, so...
Yeah.
But if she's happy, so maybe it's a condition that appropriate landscaping gets put in in an agreement between the property owner and Mr. Crook, and we can work that out together. I, I think that's...
So we could say, subject to the concurrence of the city, Forester?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. I believe you could state the condition as saying additional trees be planted as required to fill in the gap in the vegetation, preserving the natural tree cover as it.
Okay.
That would basically give administration enough room to work with the applicant to just fill in the gap without disturbing the root system of any affective interest.
Okay. Thank you very much. David, you had your hand.
Yeah, two things, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. First, on the parking layout for the handicap, I wanted to just point out and appreciate that the planner put the sign in between the spaces instead of in front of each space, which makes it very difficult for someone driving to one of those spots to really park safely. So that's a, hats off to the planner on that item. And then on the dumpster enclosure, recommended to change to masonry. When that gets changed, I would also recommend considering changing the location of it because to maneuver into that spot is going to be tricky with those trailers, and it's just not in the right angle from that drive where the street heading into the site, it just could be rotated a little bit towards...
Further around that radius.
Yeah, I think it just makes more sense. I thought that would be a good thing to do. And then, just going back to the idea that that was a recommendation, are we hearing this tonight in order to consider the site plan, or is it to set a public hearing?
We haven't held a public hearing on this yet, so no. This would only be a consideration today.
Yeah, considering to set a site, a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, the Planning Commission set a public hearing. The Community Development Director didn't get it advertised, so it's going to be in February, assuming you all agree to that.
Okay. Good.
Mr. Chairman, just really quickly, I remember when we were here, or when this issue was brought up initially, last year.
Yes.
A lot of discussions, a lot of concern about the trailers and the storage and, you know, whether they were fixed or how that was going to work. And I just want to have it clear to me and anyone who's watching is that the proposed site plan that's before us, those trailers are a permitted use on that property in their existing form. Is that going to be an issue still, or is this something that we're still going to have to deal with?
No. If the trailers are shown as parked, and they are trailers that in fact can be hitched to a vehicle and moved out, they become a part of the warehouse use, which is a principal permitted use on the site. The applicant will, however, have to make sure that the trailers are parked in the designated spot as shown on the site plan and not all over the place like it previously was. But I think Mr. Crook understands that, and in the future, moving forward, all the trailers will be parked like it is done for a typical warehouse in their designated spot.
Okay, so let's say this moves forward, and six months from now, this issue's done, and if we were to walk out there, we would see the trailers in those existing spots as identified on the site plan, correct? And if not, then it would be a violation? Okay, and the city would address it?
Unless they're totally removed, but if there are any place else other than that...
That's what I needed to know. Okay, thank you very much.
Does that also mean that no trailers, no number of trailers in addition to what shows on the site plan would be permitted?
I was going to ask for that to be a condition. This is an approved plan that's maxed out based on the layout from the architect.
Yep.
I have a question. This probably Nick could answer. In regards to recommendation number three, where any tree that dies has to be replaced, wouldn't that be covered under the existing tree ordinance?
It would be, if, once there's an approved landscape plan, he is correct, that we just enforce it, you don't get to, you have to replace anything that's dead. And it's really a perpetual maintenance agreement on the whole site, we should, we did that at my former, and we made it a formal agreement, everybody signed it, so, but you are right, technically, the fact that they're established trees and an approved landscape plan, they always have to be maintained.
So would it be necessary to have number three?
Not really, technically, no.
Okay.
But you do a formal maintenance agreement anyway?
We don't, unless you guys say we want a formal maintenance agreement, which we've done at a bunch of them, Vidia usually recommends that, so I would think we would do that.
Given the history with this, I think that would be an appropriate addition, whatever a motion might be.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Vidia, hang on, what I would say is, the trees are covered from the tree ordinance, but the bushes and stuff aren't, so by having a perpetual landscape agreement, everything's covered. We do that to everybody, this wouldn't just be on this site, so...
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Is the, but, who is that speaking? The petitioner here, would you please come forward?
Good evening, my name's Peter Stuhlreier with Design House, 3300 Auburn Road.
Welcome back, Peter.
Thank you, I appreciate it, it's good to be back. So I'm just here representing Mr. Cruck, and trying to thread the needle into a compliant site plan, and I think Vidia and Nick have given us a clear path, and a lot of assistance and good input, and I think we're close.
Your client understands everything that's been discussed?
Absolutely.
Won't be surprised by a motion that includes these things?
Will not.
Okay. Mr. Cruck, comment?
I'm good.
Please.
George Cruck with Cruck Cards.
Welcome.
I'm in compliance with what you guys are requesting.
Okay.
Well, actually, I mean, we're going to ask him about the, getting the cinder blocks around the dumpster enclosure, is that possible to be a fence, or?
We'd like that to be waived, I think that was an excessive move, and we have adjacent properties that have the same detail.
Yeah, and Vidia's not wrong, that's what the ordinance says. Chief John Seelick today sent me one, and he saw the comments in the report, that it's over burdensome, it should be to screen the thing, and we would have no problem with it being vinyl cladding, and as long as it's got gates on there, so, but I don't know that this board can do that technically, so we might have to go to the zoning board for that, to officially do it. If, it doesn't say in the ordinance...
But in a motion, if everyone's okay with it, and then you can run that down, whether or not it has to be...
If it does or not, but yeah, we're okay, Vidia's right, it says it's got to be blocked if it's blocked, but we're going to actually come back to this committee and take that away and say it's an appropriate screen.
Change that section of the ordinance.
It is over burdensome, I agree.
We'll still angle it?
Yeah, we can angle it.
We'll still angle it and get the...
So angle it around?
Yeah.
So it pulls it correctly, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you approved it with chain link and slats and gates, I'll figure out if we have to do something else.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner? Appreciate your endurance and your perseverance, and I think you and the neighbors will be pleased once this is approved and then built.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion? And what we're looking for is to schedule it for a public hearing, but I wouldn't mind putting in, as these are on the tip of our tongue, putting in the conditions in that motion, so that they're prepared.
I don't think you could do that for, in this case, just set the public hearing, we'll do that at the next meeting.
Okay, make sure all of that is caught.
Got it.
Because there's a lot of stuff.
We'll have, like Peter just said, we could change one drawing on that, and put the different materials for the dumpster enclosure, then we'll deal with that, and angle it, and a note that will say that, subject to the forester approving a site plan, we're good. Put them on the drawings, and then we're done, we won't have to have any conditions here.
Is there a motion to set a public hearing?
Move.
Moved by David to set the public hearing, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Rich. Any other discussion on this motion? And this will be the first meeting in February?
Right.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gassen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, that's approved, we'll see you back in February for the public hearing. Okay, item 6B, brownstones on Main, amendment of the approved site plan. Vidia, is that you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We reviewed a request from Mr. Schneider of Paint Creek Construction LLC to amend a previously approved site plan for this project. Now, just a brief refresh on the background, the planning commission originally granted site plan approval for the construction of five, two and a half story tall buildings with two residential units in each, for a total of 10 units, on a site that is located at the northwest corner of Main and Furnvale. The site was zoned O2, restricted office, and this took place on September 8th of 2020. Subsequently, by the time the applicant started construction, it was in June 2021, they requested an amendment to the original site plan to change the building separation based upon building code. There was something about the fire rating between the walls that necessitated a slight change in the separation distance between the buildings, so they came before you for that again. Two family dwellings are permitted as a principal land use in the O2 district by the ordinance, however, they are subject to the requirements of the RT, or the two-family dwelling requirement. So this was a principal permitted use, the planning commission approved it and granted one amendment to it. Due to a severe weather event on August 29th of 2022, apparently there were heavy wind gusts, as a result of which, two of the buildings that were under construction, the walls just came down. The original wall was designed for fire codes, but after the structural failure of the original walls, the applicant consulted with the fire chief and building official, and a recommendation was made for an alternate size of construction, which would be more durable. The creating challenges on the site, especially along the north property line, also resulted in the need to install a retaining wall along the north property line for safe ingress and egress to this northern unit over here. Since this involves a change in the site plan again, the applicant is back before you for a second amendment to the site plan. We have reviewed this project strictly limited to the scope of the changes only that are being proposed at this time. Now, the original approved walls were constructed of cinder blocks for fire safety, the new walls are going to be constructed of standard framing. It does not alter the architectural facade of the building in any way, or the separation distance between the buildings that was previously approved by the planning commission. With regard to retaining walls, I'm going to zoom into this. So with regards to the retaining walls, there is a steep grade difference in the north with a drop off of over 24 inches, as a result of which, when you have egress from the lower unit over here, then you're trying to egress from the lower unit over here, in order to allow for such safe egress, there needs to be a retaining wall and a decorative aluminum railing provided on top of it, in order for somebody to be able to come out without falling over the edge of the northernmost unit. And this is once again a building code requirement, so that is the reason for the applicant actually building a retaining wall along with, it's labeled over here, a retaining wall along with a railing. I'll go to the facade elevations, maybe that will show it better. So this is the north elevation, where you can see the railings. The original plan that actually proposed a garage space for each of the units, if you look at it, these were the individual garages that were approved, when applicant submitted for the second amendment to the site plan, the previous plan actually showed them trying to put a carport in here. It was basically pillar supports with a roof on top, so that two vehicles could park inside the garage, and two more would be provided with sheltered covering. It was a very attractive modification, but the carport would not meet the 35-foot rear yard setback requirement, so I had asked the applicant to eliminate it from the site plan. The applicant did that on this version of the plan, however, I did not get to review the plan once again to make the comment, that is why you have a reference to carports in my review letter that's in your packet, so please disregard the carport comment, it comes from a previous iteration of this plan. With regard to fencing, the amended site plan shows a 36-inch tall decorative flat-top wrought iron fence along the site's Main Street frontage, I will go to, I hope there's a detail of the Main Street frontage, that's the garage, no, this is the garage space, I don't have an elevation in the PDF packet that is online to show you the actual fence. This is the Main Street facade, however, and the applicant is proposing to have a decorative railing along the Main Street side. The fencing is attractive, and in keeping with the characters of the brownstone building, they're providing for a separation of the residential units from the public sidewalk itself, so the fencing will actually be over here next to the sidewalk, so it will separate the public sidewalk from the unit itself.
How high is that fence?
No other changes are being proposed to either the architecture, access, circulation, lighting, or landscaping. All of those are consistent with the original plan that was approved by the planning commission. At the time original approval was given, the master deed and bylaws were also subject to review by the city attorney. Any necessary tweaks to the master deed and bylaws as a result of the second amendment to the site plan will also be made and submitted to the city attorney to make sure that it is consistent. So the changes to the plan at this time basically involve installation of a retaining wall along the north property line with a 36-inch decorative railing, installation of a decorative railing along the site's Main Street frontage, and reconstruction of the walls of the unit itself with standard framing rather than cinder block framing. So all of these, except for the decorative railing along Main Street, are necessitated by compliance to the building code itself. So it's a recommendation at this time that the planning commission grant amended site plan approval for the proposed changes to the brownstones on Main located at 1205 North Main Street. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
This will have to go to a public hearing now, so...
No, because it's an amendment to a...
Because it's an amendment, it's already been held, okay, got it. Questions for the planner?
Eric? Oh, sorry. Just a question for Vidia, just so I'm clear, your letter dated November 27th, in the subject line, looks like it's referencing a landscape plan dated 11/22. When I look at the landscape plan here, the one I have is dated eight, revision date 8/11/20. So I just wanted to, although I say that in some of the comments that you're referring to regarding the retaining wall on the north side, I see that on the plan, I guess I just wanted to confirm that we've, we're indeed looking at the right plan.
Yes, I, when the applicant submitted for my review on November 27th, they submitted the last set of landscape plans and architectural elevations, and that also showed the carport structure. This letter was written in response to that, telling them the carport structure needs to go out. They were supposed to be scheduled for your December meeting, unfortunately, it didn't make it to the agenda, so they fixed it and submitted it for your January meeting, but I didn't get an opportunity to review the revised drawing, except to look and see that they eliminated the carports altogether. I think when they submitted it for the packet, an older version of the landscape plan made its way into the PDF set of the package and what was distributed to you. But what was given to me for review was the latest set of the landscape plan. So that is a good point, the applicant needs to give an updated copy of the landscape plan for file, you could add that as a condition.
I guess, maybe this is a question for the applicant once we get there, but I guess questions, what else changed on the plan? I mean, I see the retaining wall on the north side there, but if Vidia hasn't seen the plan that we're looking at, I don't know what's new and what's not.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Greg Schneider...
You're hoping never to see us again.
My favorite place to be. Good evening, Greg Schneider, Rochester Home and Office. So the changes in the site plan are very simple, north elevation, against Vidia's property, there's a large elevation change. With discussions with the fire department, I would have had to put walls in around the windows, so instead of doing that, we took that all out and retained it, so if there was ever a fire and they needed to egress the lower level windows, they could easily get out and walk out instead of trying to climb out of a pit.
And these would count as exit windows?
Correct, they made fire exit standards.
Yeah.
Additionally, that created a need for railing around the retaining wall, because the drop off is over, off the top of my head, 27 inches, I believe it is, anything over 27 inches, I have to have a barrier. We're not going with aluminum fencing, it's wrought iron, like you would see in downtown Chicago, or Washington DC, or something along those lines, decorative wrought iron.
Yeah.
And it would follow the north property line along the retaining wall, come around the front of Main Street, up the sidewalk to the entrances of the buildings, up the staircase, there'd be a gate for the lower unit to the left of the walkway, and then the wrought iron comes back around along Main Street into the next building, and it kind of meanders all the way around the sidewalks. It's off about 18 inches, two feet from the sidewalk, it's meant to be low, so it's not too high for aesthetic reasons. If we don't put it in front of Main Street, literally, we would have to put it right in front of the retaining walls for the lower levels, because they don't meet code, so basically what you're doing is you're forcing the fencing up to the building. This allows the front of the grass area to be, incorporate more of a garden area for the lower level, just more of a...
But they have access directly to the sidewalk?
Correct.
Each unit?
Yeah, they'd come up, so if you're in the lower level, you'd come up three or four stairs, you'd go through your gate and walk down a sidewalk to get to the main sidewalk.
Yes.
And it's all would be enclosed with fencing, 36 inches, I believe, is what the city requested for that.
Like a big rectangle in front of each one, correct?
It actually follows the property line, so if you go from the north, it comes down the north, goes to Main Street, goes back up the sidewalk to the main entrance, goes up the staircase, and then on the other side of the staircase, down, there's a gate, down around, and kind of, and fences your yard, basically.
I get it.
Like you would think of a picket fence on the old 50's movies or something like that, but instead of picking, it's wrought iron.
Okay. Then the subject of the landscape plan, Eric, you want to repeat that?
Well, I just, the letter that Vidia had prepared stated a landscape plan that was dated 11/22, the plan I'm looking at is dated 8/11/20.
We provided a, yeah, we provided a separate landscape plan which addresses these issues, which actually spells out the changes. It was on a separate PDF, so it might have got missed, it might emails to...
So the city's in possession of it?
The city's in possession, but we can always provide it, again, if they need it, but yes.
I just wanted to just make sure I'm looking at the latest and greatest plan that's...
Yeah, there wasn't a lot of changes, so you'll see, your plan will have a, like a cloud box, if you don't have it on your plan, then you don't have the right one.
Yeah.
The architect's not the greatest in the world to put the actual change of date, update date on it, but if you see the cloud box, that's the updated plan.
And how high is that wall on the north property line?
It gets pretty high, because I go up, so I go up as high as eight feet from the lowest spot on the property to the back corner of the, of the eight or nine feet, actually, but in reality, because I'm only halfway through the property, at the highest point, when it's finished grade, everything's done, maybe four feet at the top, between three and four feet.
And what kind of wall is that going to be, is that like a block wall?
It's a landscaping wall for that size, it's massive blocks, basically.
Yeah, okay.
And it matches, it matches the gray of the brick that's already on the building. The block.
David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, maybe I got mixed messages, so from what you said and what the planner said, the fencing in the front is not building code required, based on what I thought she said, but you said that instead of having it at the elevation differential at the building, you moved it up to the front, creating a yard, and that it serves the purpose to protect that fall zone.
Correct, because it's fully enclosed, by the time the fence is all in, it becomes a fully enclosed area.
So I challenge that a little bit, so if you're trying to protect the fall zone, moving it away from the place you'd fall, doesn't serve the purpose. So it either is a building code requirement for that purpose, or it's a fence to fence the yard. I don't know which it is, it's, because it was described both ways. And I would ask, maybe in general, is a fence in a front yard permitted? Maybe this is a question to the planner, I don't know that we have fences along Main Street, or in any front yard, or many front yards throughout the city. I always thought that fences weren't allowed in front yards. Question? Question?
Vidya?
Uh, yes. I would also ask Nick DePichen, fences that are sixty tall or privacy fences are not allowed in the front yard. I believe the city's ordinance does have a provision where they allow for a maximum of thirty-six inch. This also includes light fences, like if, if you build a hedge row, which works as a living fence. It can be up to thirty-six inches in the front yard. The fence ordinance is administratively reviewed and approved. Fences are administratively reviewed and approved. So, uh, Nick, if you can just clarify that, thirty-six inch tall is, is allowable in the front yard, right? It's only the privacy fences that are limited to the rear yards.
I, I think it's actually thirty inches, but I can confirm that, but she's right. It's all, in a residential area, y- you can't put a fence in the front yard at six feet, it's gotta stop at the front of your home. Anything thirty, I think it's thirty inches or less, we can look real quick, um, is allowed. But technically, this is an approved site plan, so it should be part of the approved site plan, not... So we have administrative approval over all fences, but not on a commercial site. So I would want to get this nailed down now. Greg, did Randy tell you thirty-six inches to remember, or?
Um, I, I'm going off the top of my memory. So I, I'd have to look at the code, uh, to find out exactly what it is.
We'll look it up here real quick, I don't have my phone.
I, I know for the, for the retaining wall, I need, I need a barrier-
Right.
On that retaining wall to the north.
Yeah, I, I think there are mixing apples and oranges. I think, David, what you were talking about is the bar- the railing on the barrier wall is there to do exactly what you said. This has got nothing to do with that. It just happens to tie in when it comes down, so that's for, by code. It's gotta make sure nobody can fall, because you're right, if you pull it away, you're not helping yourself. This is more decorations. Um, and again, if it meets code for the, the maximum height and not being called a fence in the front yard, then as a commercial district, you could do it. We, there aren't ready, buildings, you don't have an opportunity to have a fence, certainly on Main Street, even in town, so. I'm trying to picture, I think in front of the medical clinic, the old Dr. Lenore, they, they built a courtyard out of hedges. It's the same thing, so, but we'll look up and see.
My biggest concern is the safety hazard on the north. So that has to be whatever Randy tells me in the building department, I, that's what I have to, I'm trying to incorporate the look of the front to incorporate the look of the, of the whole project, like, again, trying to make it, uh, visually appealing and, uh, traditional to the city. I'm not trying to-
So you don't have to add this fencing in the front for fall purposes?
Not that I'm aware of, because it depends on how high my retaining, finished retaining wall grade is, there's a code specifics, there's a code specific, I, again, I have to go to the, the actual building code to tell you, but I believe it's anything over twenty-seven inches has to have a barrier in front of it. David might know off the top of his head, uh, what the, what it is, but it's either, it's either twenty-seven or thirty-two inches drop that you have to have a barrier in front of it.
So, uh, Chairman McGee?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so I am looking at the fence ordinance for Rochester. It's section two one two five, subsection two D. It limits fences, it says no fence over eighteen inches in height shall be constructed nearer to the street than the front building line as established by the zoning ordinance.
Uh, yeah, what I was-
Uh, I have never seen a fence height of eighteen inches. Eighteen inches is one and a half feet, that, that's not even a fence.
I know the thirty inches, the thirty inches came from my site distance. You can't have anything in the site distance, I just remember that. Remember the twenty-five foot, twenty-five foot, that can only be thirty inches, so you can see all of it when you're in a car. That's what I was thinking about.
Yes.
Yeah.
That is the clear vision corner, but this says no more than eighteen inches along the front building line. I mean, eighteen inches is one and a half feet. It will neither serve the purpose of being an ornamental fence, nor will it serve the purpose of helping any building code requirements. So I'm, um, I've honestly not come across an eighteen inch tall fence in any ordinance I've reviewed to date, so-
Vidya-
That's, uh, something we might have to look into.
Vidya, are you sure you're reading that right? I think it's eighteen inches from the sidewalk, it has to be setback is eighteen inches, not the height of the, I mean, you're reading it in front of you, but based off of my knowledge of the, of the ordinances, I believe it's either thirty or thirty-six inches with a minimum of eighteen inch setback from the sidewalk is, is what it states.
That, that's what I thought, Mr. Schneider, but I'm reading the ordinance, I'm reading the ordinance of, it's, I, I'm quoting it straight from the ordinance, two one two five two D. No fence over eighteen inches in height shall be constructed nearer to the street than the front building line as established by the zoning ordinance, which is unusual.
I don't want you to have to come back again, and I don't think we can solve this tonight. Perhaps we can just approve the more important things, the, uh, retaining wall and the, uh, and the construction code compliance.
And that's fine. Uh, and I'm comfortable with coming back, I enjoy seeing your, your faces, my faces.
Well, it doesn't require a public hearing, but I don't, I don't think we can resolve this tonight, they have to research it.
And I agree, and I'm fine with that. As long as I get the retaining wall, which is what I'm concerned about, the firewall, and then the, the-
The retaining wall and the fence on top.
Fencing per code for, that that is going to change by, I have to change those things.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion then to that effect?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor?
Support.
Supported by David. Any other discussion? So we may see you back again over, over that minor fencing issue, but you folks worked that out and they'll let us know.
I appreciate your, your help with this, and thank you very much.
Okay.
No issue.
We gotta vote on it.
Any, uh, other discussion?
You gotta vote.
The roll call, please. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor Bixom?
Yes.
Commissioner Gasson?
Yes.
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Lord?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenjuk?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Nick?
Yes.
Dee?
All right, so Dee, so see, if people saw it on the agenda, I think we had a revised agenda, you will see the Paint Creek Luxury Condos Modified Plan in February, where we'll talk about it again, the developer will make their presentation on the changes they did, and then we'll look forward to setting a public hearing at that time for March. Um, Dee, so, Mr. Roger Knapp, uh, approached me about six months ago, um, and something that he's been wanting to talk to the city about for a long time, as he watched, and he owns multiple buildings downtown.
Who is this?
Roger Knapp. So he was one of our mayors, and then he's a significant property owner in town. And Roger's a downtowner for a long time, Lake Orion, or, Oxford, and obviously Rochester. So he's watched other communities like Birmingham actually deal with the fact that, um, traditional downtowns are losing their opportunities to retailers and service industries based on the fact that people want to have offices on that first floor, and, and the argument to a planner has been over the years, I'll use a real estate office as an example, hey, we bring a lot of clients downtown, so you want me downtown, um, because I'm gonna bring people in, they're gonna have a meeting, then they're gonna go eat or shop or whatever. That's fine until you see what happens during Lanyard or Christmas, and you see the gaps between lights on-
Yeah.
In the offices. So you might, on our core block from University to Fourth, on the west side, you can walk quite a distance between buildings, between stores, because there's long office buildings in between, miss, the Artera buildings, one of them. So Greens kinda kicked this thing off for Roger Knapp. Greens is five thousand square feet on the first floor, that's a significant distance, um, to get to the next store, if you will. And even the DDA's collaboration station, technically, they are office, but they happen to sell stuff, and they bring people in to buy materials, and they have display windows, et cetera. The general office buildings don't have display windows in, in, uh, most cases. So, we started, um, researching a little bit, John Jackson, Vidya looked at it, and Patrick and I, and we saw Birmingham has done this now. They have said that you cannot have professional offices on the first floor, um, on your core Main Street, you define the area. So they said, we want you in town, but we want you on the second floor or the upper floors, if you will.
Or around the corner.
Or around the corners. So not on the Main Street fa- on the Main Street facing properties. So, we asked Jeff Crot to draft a quick ordinance, and, and what made us feel better about this, in our existing ordinance, in the CBD, the existing CB district, we say you can have upper story apartments, but you can't have them on the first floor. And that was created back in the fifties, literally, for the same reason, or the sixties, for the same reason, we didn't want residential on the first floor taking up the office. Now we call it mixed use, you want retailer, office, or something on the first floor, and then you wanna push the residents to the upper floors. So we took a, a crack at this, but as we did, war came to light. So I have met again for the thirty-seventh time with the owners of one twenty South Main, the collision shop, and now Mr. Anthony Lombardo, Lombardo Homes, has optioned that building and the cleaners. He went out to LA and got an option on both those, to come in with the site plan that you're gonna see in two months, that's three stories and mixed use. And what shed light is like, on the first floor, you don't want retail there, there's no parking, I can't even park it, um, office would be there, and that kinda made us start looking at different areas even in Birmingham, and, um, so what we're gonna do is come back with a modified ordinance, and it's gonna say basically this, from both sides of Main Street, from Second North to University, in this, within the CBD district, CDB district, we want only service industries or retail, no professional offices.
And that's south of?
Not, and south, because south, it's okay, because you're, it's not a traditional downtown-
The Lombardo site would be south of there.
Correct, and Pickway, or, uh, not Pick, Pick Quick is not up on the street, the cleaners wasn't up on the street, the ones that are on the street are her, the one we just redid, the, that Peter did, the, um, Gateway Center, and there's medical offices in there, but they have their own parking, so it, it doesn't matter. So I think we're gonna close down this gap. If you guys are okay with proceeding with the concept, again, push the professional office upstairs. It's too late for Greens now, they came in, and they'll be on your next month's meeting, and they have office on the first floor. But, he's giving up the spaces in now, at Artera, and if this gets in place by the time that is being looked at to be reoccupied, it couldn't stay general office.
Is that new that he's giving up Artera?
He knows that. So it would be on us to hurry this through, so that we can protect certain things that, we have a couple other things on the first, on the face of the buildings, I'm sorry, on the face of Main Street that could come up pretty quickly here, and we don't want any more offices there. So, we're comfortable with it, John Jackson was comfortable with it, I think Vidya looked at it with us, and Patrick's done this for a long time, and, and we think that's fair, and it's not discriminatory at all, it'll hold up, because we have upper story apartments only in that district. And then when we change, when we get through our exercise in doing the new zoning districts, that would be Core, so we'll make sure we transfer that, um, same information to the new district as we rewrite them and adopt them, so. So we would just ask that, unless there's a major problem, we'll bring it back next month with the revisions to-
Want to have a problem with that?
None.
Is there any way to work with Artera Green relative to the appearance of his windows along Main Street?
Yeah, so, so we did, so Vito's been very good to work with, so they're trying to get a lot of light in there, so they're gonna have open windows. So you'd see activity inside, and he did a good job at where he's at now. It's, it's not that it's dead, but it's at night when the lights are out, then, you know, it looks pretty like a dead spot on Main Street.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so possible lighting indoors or something?
Correct.
Sure. Yes, we will. He's been very good to work with, so.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, for a comment?
Please do.
Section eleven zero two, item one, the red line addition, I find very difficult or possibly just confusing on what you're trying to say, if you could look at that.
Say the number again, David.
Eleven zero two point one.
Okay.
Could you read that for David?
Pardon?
Could you read that for one second?
Yes, uh, I'll start from the beginning, which is already in there. Any use of building customarily incidental to a permitted principal use, comma, this is added, except that residential, comma, office, comma, warehouse, comma, storage, and other uses similarly permitted uses that are not permitted on street level or similarly not permitted on street level.
We'll fix that.
Yeah.
And I, I can tell you something else that will open the curtain up here. So when I first got here, being a planner, and I just confirmed this with Patrick, so I, I look up and down when I was here thirteen years ago and see these medical buildings, dentists, things in CBD. And if you look at the existing zoning ordinance, and maybe you can answer this, but the existing zoning ordinance, it says in CBD, you can have professional administration or, or, um, what's the third word? Professional support, general, general, professional, um, or whatever I just said, the three office categories, period. Doesn't say anything about medical. If you go to oh one, it says the exact three same words, the next two steps down, it says medical offices. So the ordinances are written, if you define something, it can't go in another district unless it's defined, so I have no idea, over the years, how medical office got put into CBD. It's not allowed. So, when we redo the ordinance, we're gonna fix that.
Fix that.
Because it's just a little thing, and, and second one, with beauty signs, it never said you can have beauty signs in CBD. It says you can have them in office. I, I don't know why that was, but we're gonna fix that.
Perhaps there were times when, by tenancy, tenants was a desire.
And I, we believe that administration used to say professional offices, that's a medical, doctors, professional, you could, you could stretch that, but it's odd that it says medical offices in another district. So we're gonna clean all that up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question, does that go to the city council?
Yes.
Okay, um, miscellaneous, let's go to public comment again. Is there any other public comment? Anyone waiting rows to speak to us? Anyone else in the audience have anything to add? Okay. Nick, back to you, number nine, upcoming agenda items.
Yeah, Patrick's been working with all these folks, so the, the granary, the elevator sites, so remember, we're caught in a little bit of a quagmire, they can't design the site because of the, the, the dirtiness of the site or the, um, contamination on the site traditionally, so they had to push everything to the outside so they could keep the inside open for retainage of water and big pipes underground. So that, there is not an existing zoning classification that you can design that to. They came in with low density, low units, low height, everything, um, but they were planning on that being coming a PICA or the new zoning classification MU, mixed use. So, we went to city council, opened that dialogue and said, so we need to get this first district adopted, um, and that ended up into a discussion about why we're going to meet, I'm gonna switch a little bit, to January sixteenth, we are inviting the planning commission and the, and the city council in this room, we'll actually do a big square, John Jackson, Vidya, myself, and Patrick will be there, and we're really gonna talk about process. This isn't about the elevator or technically even solaronics, it's about how do we get from a future land use plan that was adopted by this body and city council, yet when you read it in detail, it's pretty wonky still, we need to get it right. So we're gonna talk about what steps we have to take, what comes back here, what's a minor change that could go right to council, not wait for every district to be done a year and a half from now and adopt them, start adopting them.
Is there an openness to that from the council?
I think the council-
Wants to hear the process.
Wants to hear the process and be educated as well, and, and as I told the chairman earlier, can I?
Yep.
Nick and I are gonna meet and kinda get an agenda of that, and then we're gonna run it by-
Yep.
Chairman McGee, to, so we have our, all of our input.
And, and we're gonna, we're not gonna do it live on TV, but we're gonna tape it so everybody can watch it multiple times to understand the planning process. We never, we never got that far. If you look in the master plan, there's the next, the back end of that book says implementation plans. The next implementation plan is to draw the actual dialogue, turn it into a zoning ordinance text. draw the actual dialogue, turn it into a zoning ordinance, uh, text, we never got that far.
Right, and...
It's true.
Yes. Um, so, one, it's, it is a open meeting, because it has to be, because it's a city council or a planning commission, and then, two, no decisions will be made, so, so solaronics...
Yep, that's not...
Issue could, the zoning can be discussed, but there will be no...
Not the project.
Yeah, and it's, when we've been talking to the residents about solaronics, and they keep calling, throwing back to the elevator, it's like totally different processes, the elevator has to get a rezoning through here and city council, and if that doesn't take place, they can't build what they want to build, it's zoned industrial, or you have to change the PICA line, the potential intensity change, change area line, to be able to make a site plan that you want not to meet industrial. Solaronics is a pure straight-up rezoning with a conditional ask, they're asking for RM2 with a condition that only goes to three story, whatever they're gonna ask for, two separate, can't even do that with the elevator, because it doesn't even exist, so, again, process.
But the elevator wants a zoning change as well.
Correct.
Sure.
But they, they don't want a conditional zone, they just want a straight-up zone.
They need it to maximize the, uh, the use.
Yep, so both, yeah, and there's other ones in town that could come in and ask for zoning, so we're gonna go over that process with everybody.
This is what happens when an old town converts and just...
Absolutely, it's not unusual that you're...
Not unusual.
Everything's tougher when you have existing conditions and existing zoning that you can't, it doesn't fit anything.
And plating and all these things.
Exactly.
Just the way it is.
Right, so that's the granary, the downtown inn, um, we've been working with Vidia and Peter collage to, I think we're getting that straightened out, so we'll bring that forward so he can get his facade renovation.
That's strictly a, um, facade.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, um, the preserves, so Mr. Lochurko, I don't know when he's shooting for, Patrick, did he say a couple months?
Uh, you know, I thought he'd have new plans in by now, Nick, so, I would assume very soon.
Right, so that's down at the old cement plant, and he's reduced the density there because he couldn't work his way through that easement, so he had to get off the easement, and he's working on that. Greens, we talked about facade change only, and then the Brown Iron Brewery, they're working through their site plan now, we had a great meeting with, um, Vidia and the petitioner met out at, um, McKinnis' spot to go over what she needs to get that to a point where we can do a special exception for outdoor dining, for a restaurant industrial, et cetera.
There is a liquor license available?
There, there's, they, they were not grant, they were not granted the Class C, that went to the Roxy, but they can get a redevelopment license, which we call bistro license.
Re-restaurant redevelopment?
Yep, yep, so, exactly, so they're, they're...
A non-population license.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, that's it?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I, I kind of missed my opportunity at miscellaneous, but I had something I wanted to bring up regarding the, um, truck cards, when we were talking about the masonry screening at the dumpster, food for thought, and it's a code requirement, or not code, ordinance requirement, our kind of casual conversation was, we're okay with it not being, and looking like maybe it's okay, I, I think we have to have, my opinion, a very strong line that it's an ordinance requirement, just like all the other things we were reviewing that property for, they're ordinance requirements, so we can hardly say no, or it's okay to masonry, if we're saying okay to other use issues that that property had. I don't think we could accept a submittal that says, "Okay, we're gonna be, look the other way on that."
No, that, that wasn't what I was saying, what I was saying is, I'll find the process, which is gonna be go to the zoning board and ask for a variance on the materials.
I, I was gonna bring that up too, I think, knowing a little bit about how that works, that will be a very uphill hardship to say, "Well, I can't do a masonry wall because..."
I agree, I agree, so what's gonna happen, because Chief Ceslik's been bugging us for a long time, we're gonna bring to this committee next month probably, he hates that condition. There are very, any dumpster enclosures in this town that match the buildings, it is written, like Vidie even said, it's there, I don't know why it's there, everybody does everything else, we have wooden ones, we have slatted ones, we have masonry ones, so we'll start that process, when the zoning board sees that, you, you know, that we're in process of considering it, they could hear it, so, he doesn't have to have a dumpster, he can get rid of the dumpster right now, period, not worry about that until we make a decision.
That might be the route?
That might be, take the dumpster off.
In my eyes, for this board to say, "Okay."
Yeah.
Not having something not compliant on the plan...
You can't do that, right.
Would be the easiest way for us to say, "Okay."
I, I agree.
If it's not required.
Yeah, I, I was looking at that, when it's like, "We'll figure it out, but we can't waive the rule, there's, we don't have the authority."
No.
Some, like it says, sometimes you can waive the wall with landscape, but it doesn't say you can waive the materials for the dumpster, so, it was only, but you're right, it, it's not a hardship unless we're going down a path to change the whole ordinance.
Well, we're on solid ground with him, and the, the landscape wall.
Correct.
Under our...
Absolutely, it says that clearly.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for pointing that out. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so two questions, so Nick, of these agenda items that you just brought up, which ones are coming to, because we have solaronics at the next one?
Yep.
Which ones are these, are all these coming?
So, I'm gonna believe that the downtown inn will make it, the, that granary will not make it, Greens won't, should make it, and Brown Iron has two more weeks to get their plans in some three.
So, the elevator site is not coming, and Lochurko's not coming.
Okay.
So, I, I thought if all those hit, that'd be a long meeting.
It'd be a long meeting.
The brewery, the, the vet hospital?
It is.
Is that the building?
Yes, yeah.
Where are they going, do we know they're not staying in the city?
I think they're going to Auburn Hills, they, they just couldn't find a place big enough to go in here.
Build a new site, or whatever?
Hmm.
And I had one other, ju- ju- just for, um, clarification on the Paint Creek, uh, on the solaronics thing.
Yes.
So, we're talking about having a meeting in February, and then the process is, we can or cannot decide to have a public hearing.
Correct.
And then that would be in March, and that would be a public hearing for both the site plan and...
And the rezoning.
Rezoning, and then if that passed...
Then it's gotta come to the council.
Then it goes to the city council...
Rezoning.
For rezoning only, not site plan.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, okay, so that, that's kind of the process that I've been...
The mechanics of it.
Yep.
Um, and it just, each one of those processes, we could or could not move it forward depending on this board.
Can I add one more to that? What, what about, I, I know we're not getting into detail on this particular proposal, but it sounds like they might be applying for brownfield funding on this?
Which will be, yeah, totally separate, so about three of them now are coming in with brownfield, so the elevator, the 120 South Main, and solaronics will all probably go, but that's got nothing to do with this board, so, that's, that's a separate action of the brownfield authority, that then goes to the city council ultimately.
Right, because that's still, that's still a process that they would have to go through.
Absolutely, on top of it.
So, we could approve site plan, even though they don't have their brownfield, that's a separate item entirely.
Right, we, you all like to ask them, "Are, are you considering a brownfield?" And they usually go on record saying they are, aren't.
Yeah.
Um, oh, actually for, and Randazl, do you remember, he's coming back with that, so.
Randazl said he wasn't, but now he is.
Right, and now he is, yeah.
That brownfield chairman's a tough guy, though.
Yeah, he is.
Is he?
Yeah.
You know, it would be good to, uh, explain, not now, but maybe next, next time, what that really means to everyone.
Yeah, yep, yeah, because we talked, there, we've already had these deep dives in it that we get excited about tax base, so let's say it's two years to build out, and you, oh, you get excited, well, it's the next year that it hits the tax roll, and then if you have a brownfield of seven years on top of that, you're capturing the, the city's taxes and the county's taxes, paying them back over seven years, so you really don't see the tax base increase until that brownfield's done. Now, I can tell you a great story, Rewald was a 7.8-year brownfield, got done in 3.2 years, it's paid off. So, that's back on full tax roll, four years quicker than it was supposed to be, because their value came in higher of the build out, and the cleanup was less, so, we have a great success story, and we got, didn't even use the full million dollar grant in the loan, so, um, but we, we look skeptically at, the brownfield team will say, worst case scenario, we're gonna lock you down to seven years or whatever we're gonna do, and we don't count on dollars for that. We even go into the depth of a industrial, like Rewald, so an office building has little or no impact on the DPW water sewer, they pay their water bills, they pay their sewer fees, et cetera, and during the day, maybe you might have an emergency once in a while, but when you have residential asking for a brownfield, then there's a good chance that they're gonna use more of the city services, and we're getting nothing. So, technically, you can do things called pilots, where you say, "Okay, we're not gonna give you 100% every year of your abatement, we're gonna stretch it out another two years, because we want somebody to cover our costs in case something goes wrong there, and you're, for police and fire, et cetera, so..."
Paying in lieu of taxes.
Exactly, sorry, yep, and, uh, so that's discussions we'll have with the planning commission, and, um, it, the good news is, we're cleaning up sites, the bad news is, we have a lot of sites that aren't clean, but if you don't touch them, we don't even notice them, but they're gonna sit like that, there's a reason Suave hasn't built on the mill race, that's just a mess down there, so, it's not dirty, it's unstable, so...
That's not a brownfield though.
They cleaned it up, so that one's not even a brownfield, but the environmental, Rochester's home to ex-mill ponds and lakes, and you, you know that, and it's, makes it much more difficult to build, so, doesn't mean every inch of Rochester has to get built on either, um, so...
It's great to be a city that's loved, you know, I'm glad people are knocking on our doors, there are a lot of cities...
Yeah, Anthony and Marcy told us that we got our final number from last year, so our, it's capped at 5% because of Headley, but we literally had our TA, TAVs went up 5.9%, highest in the state, basically, so that's, says very well for us, but you can, it's capped at five, but, um, desirable place to be for residential, for everything, so, that's, that's good, that helps, every little dollar helps, but, um, but people's actual...
Were they going to SAV?
Pardon me, oh, taxable value, so, your SAV is what you say it's worth, what you're paying, yeah, that's, so that's capped, but SAV can go...
State equalized value.
Yeah, and state equalized value can go way higher, so your house, you might, if you've owned your house, yeah, for 20 years, it could look like, the SAV might say it's worth a half a million dollars, but your TAV is 180, because...
It's been capped every year.
Been capped.
You sell it.
That when you sell, the next guy's paying, yeah, the next guy pays.
It could be longer.
And I just thought, so, you had asked us to bring back the lighting ordinance in February, so that's on that agenda too.
So, you give me back?
Yeah. That's, the next thing, are you gonna be here in February?
February, what's the date?
7th.
Yes.
And you're gonna be gone after that, or before?
I'm gone February, I was supposed to be gone the whole month, but I've changed it, so I'm just gonna be, I'll be gone February 14th through like the 20th, but I do have some other travel, are there two meetings in February?
Well, we haven't gotten to that yet.
Right, I don't think so.
I want to bring something up, just, I'm going to Florida, I go every year, I go February 1st, uh, April 30th, um, the meeting is February 7th, I have often flown back for important meetings, is there any chance of moving the February 7th meeting forward?
Is it the 7th, or the...
The 6th is a Monday.
6th, the 6th, it's the 6th.
February 6th.
It's the 6th.
Moving it up.
And that may jam some of the applicants, I understand that.
When do you, when, when do you plan on leaving, Dennis?
Um, if we did it on the 30th, I'd be out of here on the 31st.
Well, why don't we just, if, um, that we could do a special meeting is the other thing, just for that, if you're concerned about that one item.
No, that, that's true, we could, that would split it up a little bit.
It's a good idea.
Break it up.
Consider it an agenda.
I'm good with that, absolutely, you know, my only concern is...
Perception again?
Well, not even perception, just a lot of people, we've been putting it out there, that it's the first meeting in February, it's the first meeting in February.
Yep. You set expectations.
Well...
Yeah.
You, you, you know, I don't know how...
We could make it February 1st.
I was gonna say the same thing.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
We could do that.
Same, same thing, I, I'm, I'm here, I'm for it, I, I'm just saying is, I don't want, if, you know, I've been communicating, first meeting in February, the first meeting in February.
And then it's not.
That's true.
And it's to accommodate meeting, which is important.
It is important, but you know, we have...
Well, I want to be here for that.
Yeah, we have a hard time, we would have a hard time getting published in the paper by making it, because the way that...
Either of those dates.
The, the sec, the, we're set now, we can make it, if we move it forward, we're gonna be jammed for time, because the way that things, we'll fly in, you get to go, are you driving down?
Yeah.
And then flying back?
Yeah.
Nick's got a plane.
Yeah, so I'll use...
What's that?
Nick's plane, you could tell.
It's more likely Patrick has a plane than you, so...
Okay, so let's leave it where it is, and, uh, we'll just figure that out.
Okay.
Uh, here's the other thing I want to mention, the, the light ordinance is coming up. We were challenged last time whether or not we had gone to look at the matter at hand. I had before, I've done it again. I would be hard pressed to support a lighting ordinance change based on those conditions. The, the problem is that Ms. Kane's front yard faces, because of the way the city was planted, it faces the side open driveway on Fourth Street, she's looking at the two lights on either side of the garage, the lights are old fixtures, they are incandescent bulbs, they are frosted glass with yellow tones, there is not a problem with those lights, to ask someone to put in lesser lights would create a safety hazard. I've taken the opportunity to drive virtually every street in the city since that last meeting, there are a million...
I, I wasn't exaggerating, I said it's 80%.
Every new house has the new kind of fixtures with LEDs in them.
And crystal lights.
They're 10 times as bright as...
And, and I, I go by there every night on purpose, and I don't know if the guy's